Good evening, everyone. We'll go and call the City Council meeting for April 4th, 2011, to order. First thing on the agenda, as always, is the roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Hattcock. Kroger. Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Wa. Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
We do have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Just as before we get going, just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or a pager, we would appreciate that you either turn that off or put it into the courtesy mode. We certainly appreciate that. The other thing is if you do wish to speak on any issue on the agenda, we do have speak request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, to our right, over in the media table. If you please fill that out and also put the item that you wish to speak to. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. I would ask everyone to rise for the invocation. Roger Gillimore from the YMCA will be giving our this evening's invocation. Then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your service to the community. Just a little encouragement to offer you from Galatians 6 verse 9. And let us not grow weary while doing good. For in due season, we shall reap if we do not lose heart. So do not lose heart. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, glorious is Your name. We give You thanks, Father, for the city, for the city officials, the city government, staff, the elected officials. Lord, we praise You and thank You for their service to this community. Pray now that You would be with them this evening. Guide them, lead them, strengthen them, encourage them that they may not lose heart, and grant to them wisdom in all decisions that are before them. We pray in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. Next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items to be placed on the agenda? I do have a 38A. Is that correct, Vicki? And I also have a 54A, which will go under Mayor's Items, which is reallocation of funds for the Cornerstone Rescue Mission. Vicki, what are we calling 38A?
Mayor, that would be a request to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a revised covenant agreement, replacing the previous covenant agreement with Rapid Center LLC dated June 2008.
Okay, very good. You have a handout here that identifies it 38 and referenced that. Very good. Okay, additional items to be added to the agenda. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update on the donations for the boxing club. Thank you.
Why don't we call that, we're going to call that 54B. So 54B, Boxing Club donations. Okay, additional items. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add an informational item, the Rapid City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Draft Report.
Okay, we'll call that 54C. And let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two raffle requests to add. One is from the Western Dakota Technical Institute Paramedics Club. The second is from the South Coast School of Mines and Technology Foundation.
What number do you want to call those? Where are we at on the agenda?
They could be the last two items.
Okay, let's call those 68A and B.
Thank you.
B. Any additional items to add to the agenda? At this point, we will go with the agenda as published with the addition of 38A, 54A, 54B, 54C, and the 68A and B. Any additional items to be added to the agenda? Seeing none, Chair, look for motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the approval of the minutes. Chair, look for motion to approve the March 18th, 2011 special council meeting and the March 21st, 2011 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Words and recognitions. We typically do that on the second meeting of the month, so we have no recognitions for employees or retirement, so we will move forward. We're on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns of the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous council vote of the council members present. I do not have any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak to any issue that is not on the agenda? Very good. We will move on. We are on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 1 through 55 inclusive. Chair, would look for motion to open the public comment period on items 1 through 41 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are during the, we are open for public discussion. Items 1 through 41. I do have a speaker request form from George Dunham, item number four. Just a reminder, we do time this, Mr. Dunham, so if you'd watch the lights, please identify yourself for the record. Then the floor is yours. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm George Dunham. I think I know many of you. I'm here tonight representing SimCom, which is an electronic manufacturing company here in Rapid City. I wrote each of you an email and a memorandum relative to item four on the agenda. I think the memorandum speaks for itself. I would like to answer any questions that anyone may have of me relative to the memorandum or any, anything else relative to SimCom and that item four on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. And as we, if it does get pulled from the consent calendar, they will certainly have the opportunity to ask the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. I have no further speaker request forms. Anyone else wish to speak to any item? We're dealing with items 1 through 41 inclusive. 1 through 41 inclusive. That's probably not through 41. Let's see. Charlene, does that include 1 through 41? Okay, it's afterwards. Okay. Any further discussion? I'll give everyone an opportunity to speak. If not, the Chair would look for motion to close the public comment period on items 1 through 41 inclusive, please.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Excuse me. We're on to the consent calendar. Items 1 through 34 inclusive. 1 through 34 inclusive. Chair would ask if any of the items need to be removed from the consent calendar. I believe item number seven needs to be removed. Okay, very good. Any additional items? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mike, please.
I would ask for items four and 18.
Jordan, your mic, please.
Hello?
Don't know my, okay, go ahead and shout it out. Four and?
18.
Four and 18. Very good. Hey, Roy, can you check on the mics out here? Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Thank you, Mayor. I turned my light on, but those were the two I wanted to come there to. Thank you, sir.
Any further items to be pulled from the consent calendar? We're dealing with items 1 through 34 inclusive, and so far, we have items four, seven, and 18 to be pulled from the consent calendar. Seeing no further lights. Chair, look for motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 34 inclusive, with the exception of four, seven, and 18. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number four, and Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is to authorize staff to proceed with the process to order in sidewalks and to allow the property owners until September 1 of this year to install the sidewalks in their own accord, yield to the floor.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Would Mr. Ellis be able to, I was wondering why the, why you think the timing is right now to do this, to put the sidewalks in?
Okay, let's go to Mr. Ellis, but I believe it was at the direction of the City Council.
Oh.
That is correct. It was at the recommendation of City Council that this moves forward.
Okay, well, very good, Robert, because sidewalks are very important for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies to Mr. Dunham, but I did not receive that memo. I'm sure it does speak for itself, but I would have some questions for him, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
If he's willing to answer.
Go ahead and state your question, please.
Good evening, Mr. Dunham.
Good evening.
And if the Chair would so indulge me here, having not received personally your memo, would you mind summarizing it?
Mr. Dunham.
Certainly would. The memorandum relates to the city's, well, to this item where you're proposing to have sidewalks installed along Disk Drive from approximately the end of, the east edge of Lowe, or Best Buy to, I think it's Lowe's, rather, the east edge of Lowe's to and past Riddle Jewelry. And the building that we recently purchased, that SimCom recently purchased, is the old SCI Sanmina Building. There's, in this distance along Disk Drive, a significant amount of that, or length of that, is property that's owned by SimCom at this time. The problem with that is that I asked if, and I'd asked the city staff if any kind of a pedestrian study had been done to determine the need for the sidewalk, or indeed if the sidewalk was intended to be on our side of the street or the other side of the street. It looks as though there's been a path worn on both sides of the street. And so the question is, is there a real need from a pedestrian traffic standpoint? And which side of the street should the sidewalk indeed be on? Beyond that, there's an issue relative to the cost of the sidewalk. The sidewalk along our building frontage is approximately 1,500 feet. It will be a very expensive sidewalk to build, and presumably SimCom would have to pay for it, whether we want to or not. So I question the fact that it is very expensive, and we really have no alternative if you decide that you want us to build the sidewalk. We can't logically fight it, or I'm not aware that we can. So my problem with that is, well, another problem relative to that is that the city, when the property was originally deeded to a company called Control Data, who are the company that originally built the building, the city kept back a very deep easement along Disk Drive. They kept back 100 feet of easement along Disk Drive. So all of the, nearly all of the property that the sidewalk would be constructed on is property that we really have no use of anyway. Since 100 feet deep back from Disk Drive, there is a perpetual easement that we can't, we can't build anything on, we can't, effectively cannot use. So we'd be building a sidewalk on what is essentially city property, because we have no rights to use it. Third, and finally, relating to this issue, is the fact that we, SimCom recently purchased a company and that, a company that's located in New York, and that, we intend that we're going to work with that company and integrate it into SimCom, and as a result of that, we'll be having a very large expansion here in Rapid City. That's the real reason that we bought the building. And so we plan to add a significant number of jobs here in Rapid City and expand our business here rather than somewhere else. We indeed worked with Ben Snow and the Economic Development people, and we were given a grant to help us train, hire and train some of the employees, and to use some of the money to purchase equipment. We, right now, indeed, we also have, have been fortunate that the city is providing an additional loan to us to help pay for some of the costs through some economic development funds. So we're using that, as well as a very large amount of bank financing, to currently do some major remodeling in the building to bring it up to.
Mr. Dunham, I'm going to interrupt you just procedurally for just a second. Mr. Costello, your time is up. Would anybody please yield?
I can yield the floor unless I'm.
Okay, okay, very good.
Excuse me, I'll try to speak.
No, that's all right. We're just procedurally, so Mr. Kroger yields his time. So with that, Mr. Dunham, please continue.
Anyway, because of the amount of money we're spending and the fact that we've been fortunate to gain bank financing, as well as a loan from the city and a grant from the city, this is not an opportune time for us to spend a large amount of money building a sidewalk, when we should be spending the money preparing the buildings so that we can hire people and put them to work. So we found this effort to build the sidewalk to be, to have a very unfortunate timing for us. And because of these three things, I wrote this memorandum, and I do have a spare copy, if you'd like a copy, Mr. Costello.
If you just take it down to the end there.
Certainly, and I appreciate that.
Very good. Mr. Dunham, thank you so much. Mr. Costello, you still have the floor.
Thank you, and many thanks to Alderman Kroger for yielding me more time to learn and understand this item. Mr. Dunham, does SimCom encourage its employees to lead healthy lifestyles?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. One thing we've seen more and more of in Rapid City is people choosing, in light of their desire and their companies encouraging them to lead healthy lifestyles, choosing alternative forms of travel other than driving to get to work, and also walking over their breaks. When, so in light of your company encouraging its employees to lead healthy lifestyles, when would be an opportune time for SimCom to install this sidewalk?
Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure that there's an answer to that right now, because we are in this transitional period. We're continuing to spend money on the building, and as soon as, as soon as the building is fully occupied, and we've taken care of the major part of our financial obligations, then certainly, if we're required by the city to build a sidewalk, that would be a more opportune time than now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for answering those questions. I certainly don't want to see this get pushed off, and I can understand the financial situation that SimCom is in, but I also understand the needs of the community as a whole to have a level walking surface there. There are dirt paths on each side. They are worn. You do see them at times with muddy footprints, so people will walk there regardless, or perhaps people need or have to walk there regardless of the weather. So I think it's in our best interest, as soon as possible, to improve this area, to improve the northern side of Rapid City by adding in a sidewalk here. Right now, if, and if Mr. Ellis could help me out here, Robert, when, what is the deadline that we set at the last Public Works meeting?
Mr. Ellis?
September 1st.
September 1st. Mr. Dunham, is there any way you would be able to look at the progress of SimCom? How the company's moving along with their transition? And come back before September 1st to let us know a timeline of when they could install sidewalks?
I'd be pleased to make a report to you at, at, let's say, by September. I'll report back to the council and give you progress.
Okay, and another question for Mr. Ellis, as far as procedurally. If September 1st is our deadline, and Mr. Dunham comes in on September 1st, does that technically meet the deadline? Do we still have a council have time to operate on that?
I'm going to go to Jason Green on that. Mr. Green, I think what the question was is if there's a report in September, does the council have the ability to amend its self-imposed deadline?
Well, I think the council would have the ability to change course. I don't think that's a good, good route to go, though we saw what happened with the Hanson property in that regard. My recommendation would be if you're not ready to order in the sidewalk today, continue this item until perhaps the second council meeting in August to allow for that report that Mr. Dunham made, and then you could proceed at that point.
I see. Well, I'm certainly ready to order in sidewalks today, so I will yield the floor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I'm not a, if we want to continue it till September 1st, we have done that for people in order to get sidewalks in. I mean, we've done that for Sid, I think it was like a year or six months or something, and then the bottom line was, there were so many continuances, we didn't get them in, and that's why we ended up ordering them in. But my main thing today is, I think the timing is right. We did get a letter, and it says the timing is wrong, and I think it's right to put in the sidewalks. Just, my bottom line is, is people in Rapid City think infrastructure is very important. They think sidewalks, streets, and basically water sewer and things like that are very important, and it's been said over and over again. And I too feel that's very important. I just don't want the financial burden to come back to the city or the taxpayers, because I did hear there was going to be a bike pass and some other things out there, but bike passes are paid for by the taxpayers. They're not paid for by the person that would, in this case, put in the sidewalk. So I'm seeing, when, on this message, it says we are sending mixed messages, or this is a mixed message, to private capital investment. But I have to say, it is a mixed message. We do appreciate private capital investment. We appreciate everything you're doing, Mr. Dunham with SidCom. We really do. But the small business owner on St. Pat, not Mr. Hanson, but the other one, it was a financial burden. It was, it was an expense. It is to everybody. So we can't treat finance, or private investment any different than we would treat the small business owner. So what I'm saying is, if we want to be fair to you, it is fair. We did continue and give people a chance, in a sense, to order in those sidewalks later, like in September, September 1st. I'm all in favor of that, because it takes timing. You need to get SidCon going. You need to expand it. You need to do some things that, for you financially, make this more feasible. I understand that. But if this council would like to continue, that's fine. But my bottom line is, small businesses, we do the same thing to. We shouldn't be any different than private investment. And when we send that message, or we send these letters, when is the timing right? That's all I think the council wants to know. When is the timing right to put in our, our? When is the timing right to put in our, our sidewalks for our people without having the taxpayers fit the bill? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Dunham, for taking the time earlier to discuss this issue. I guess I would just ask our city attorney a question quickly.
Go ahead, please.
So, it's my understanding, then, that the recommendation to allow Mr. Dunham to come back in September to look at where SimCom's at and then assess whether or not a continuation to move forward, that would, you're advising against that.
Mr. Green?
What I'm advising against is ordering the sidewalks in by a certain date, knowing that you're not committed to that date. I think that if you want to provide additional time for the property owner to, to undertake the, the business that he's described and to come back and report, I think that's A-OK. But I don't think that you should, should set a date when the sidewalk has to be installed if that's the, if that's the course you're taking. If the council's ready to order in the sidewalk tonight, by all means, approve the item on the agenda. If you're not ready to order it in, simply continue the item to a date certain when Mr. Dunham can come back and report.
Yep. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Mr. Dunham, it's, as we discussed earlier, this is an item that I appreciate the jobs and the small manufacturing that you're bringing in. However, after looking over this issue, going back to June 2005, there was a project for 72,000 on our CIP agenda to order in sidewalks. Subsequently, that later May in 2005, we actually had a public works item for this drive sidewalks. This has been an ongoing item for North Rapid to implement and finally get this accomplished for these sidewalk projects. And it frankly puts me into a, a tough situation because this is something that North Rapid, and I think it's pretty evident by the trail and the footprints, as mentioned previously, is needed. Along with, there's also runoff issues onto that road. I guess I would, I'll yield the floor to my colleagues, but I also feel very strongly that this is something that North Rapid needs as a community. And I, I guess I'm feeling fairly strongly that this is something that needs to get done.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Bill Watt.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for the Director of Public Works, Robert Ellis.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ellis, what is the current cost per lineal footage for sidewalks?
Mr. Ellis?
I don't know that I have that in front of me today. I believe the rough estimate that we had presented to the Public Works Committee was about $120,000 for this sidewalk to be installed.
And Mr. Dunham said you had 100 feet?
We haven't made an estimate or had our contractor make an estimate. But I visited with Mr. Ellis briefly about this. And I, I disagree with the number. And I think he conceded that the number might be low because this sidewalk at this location will be very expensive to build. The slope of the hill is such that there'll be, need to be either retaining wall work or a significant amount of excavation and dirt moving to flatten out an area for the sidewalk. And it's my belief that the preliminary estimate done by Public Works is probably low.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Ellis, my second question was, have we ever done pedestrian studies on which side of the street to put the sidewalks on?
Mr. Ellis?
No, we generally don't do pedestrian studies. Traffic patterns are gonna change. Pedestrian patterns are gonna change every day of the week, depending on what day of the week it is, what the weather's like. It fluctuates too much to go out and do a study one day to say that represents the entire year. Quite frankly, if you see well-worn paths, there's people that are using it. And really, that is my engineering analysis to determine if there's a need for sidewalk. And there are very well-worn paths up here.
Is the, is the worn paths the same on both sides of this drive?
I do know that there are on both sides of the street. And I don't know which one's worn more than the other. But I do know that I have seen pedestrians on both sides of the street.
By putting them on, let's say, the south side of this drive, would that be less expensive? Would the slope change being on the south side of this drive?
Mr. Ellis?
I would have to go survey the area to see if you would need retaining wall on that side as well. I believe you're probably still gonna run into some areas with retaining wall and some grading. My guess is the north side would be a little bit more expensive per foot, but there may be less footage, linear footage necessary to install it on the north side.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion to continue this to the, was it the second week in August? And then I'll, I'll go on to explain my position.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, to continue this to the second week of August. Now, keep in mind, the motion on the floor is to continue. With that, Mr. Weifenbach, you can speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the reason I'm continuing this is that there is some obvious, I don't think Mr. Dunham's going anywhere. I don't think he's, from what he's saying, I don't think he's gonna run from putting this sidewalk in. I mean, if he does win it, we're gonna find him. First of all, I appreciate what you're doing. And you're starting up your business up there. And we appreciate that. And the citizens of the city appreciate that. Okay?
Thank you.
And the last thing I wanna do is, is distract your attention from building that building and putting those people in there, putting them to work and have to deal with the sidewalk. If we continue this, Mr. Dunham, obviously you'll come back. And I think Mr. Costello asked about a position on, on where you were sitting with whatever was happening. I think I feel comfortable with that. And I would, I would believe our, my colleagues probably would too. And understanding that some point in time, those sidewalks will probably have to go in there. And maybe there's some different avenues we can look at. But at this point in time, I think you probably have some other, other areas you need to concentrate on to get that business moving forward. So, that's my reasoning for it. I, I don't think you're going anywhere. I don't think you're trying to skirt the responsibility of, of buying that land or putting those sidewalks there. So, that's why I made the, the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue this item to the August 16, 2011 City Council meeting. Mr. Green, anything else? If you're looking for a date specific, is that what you're doing? Yep? Okay. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is to continue this item to the August 16 City Council meeting. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with 1-0 from Alderman Costello. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dunham, we'll see you in August. Thank you. Item number seven, Alderman Quaker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is to acknowledge the report on the Fairmount Boulevard cleanup. Move to acknowledge.
We have a motion, second to acknowledge. Let's see. Discussion on the motion, let's go to Alderman, Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two bouquet of roses that I want to throw out tonight. One is to Brett Kavanaugh, a young School of Mines student that got ahold of a fellow School of Mines student, Alderman J., Jordan Mason, about some questions concerned he had along Fairmont Boulevard where the recycling bins are located. He and his family and his friends walk along there and it was obvious what the wind had done, the debris, the things that had been left, the mess that was out there. And his question was, what can I do? I wanna get some of my friends together and we want to have a cleanup over there the following, the upcoming Saturday. Mr. Mason sent the information on to Alderman Weisenbach and myself, got ahold of them. He had people lined up. He had flyers out. The only thing he needed was to, somewhere to put, a container to put that in. And then maybe some more garbage bags to help get some more of the debris in that end there. I made one phone call to Mr. Ellis. Mr. Ellis got ahold of Carl Murbach, who is the superintendent of the Solid Waste, and said, what can we do by Saturday, which was less than a week? He had his crew out there, standing by, met Mr. Kavanaugh and his friends, became their cheering session, brought along extra 55-gallon bags. And they helped cheer on the young students and old people like me out there that were trying to help clean that up. And I really appreciate when citizens take a hand in like that, grab a project and work with it. They gathered over 14 55-gallon bags, about 420 pounds of garbage and things that would not fit into 55-gallon bags. And take that kind of initiative and then get the support from the city, couple of bouquet of roses out to them. I do wanna mention that I was not too favorably impressed that while I was, been over picking up stuff and putting it into bags, that the number of cars that honked as they went by and yelled, hi, Gary. How they knew me from that side, I'm not sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hadcock. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate all the work you did on Fairmont Street. I just wanted to remind people, we do have cleanup day for Rapid City as well. So, if you'd like to pitch in and help, we do have that, I think, April 25th?
30th.
April 30th. And that's once, we usually do that, what, twice a year, Mayor?
Once a year.
So, they put the dumpsters out twice a year? Is that, I thought we did, we decided to put dumpsters out in the spring and the fall. We don't do that?
We actually have extra, just, you know, Alderman Hadcock, we actually do get the dumpsters out here very shortly. But we do put out extra dumpsters during that specific day, though.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate what you did, Gary and your friends and the people from Tech and getting the word out. But again, April 30th, we need your help in Rapid City. It's beautification and we need help with cleanup day. Done it many years and it's a good project.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Weifenbach. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I think I seen Gary there, picking up garbage.
How could you tell?
I'm not going to that. But I, I appreciate Mr. Kavanaugh's, or Kavanaugh, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, his, his efforts there. And I just wanna let people in the South Rapid area know that that is slated to be replaced up there. That whole area will be replaced. I believe it's 2012, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, Robert.
Yep, go ahead. Robert?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And thank everybody for the, the work they did.
Yep, very good. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number 18, Alderman Quaker, if you'd please read that in.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 18 is Airport Master Plan. It's to adopt an amendment to the Adoptive Comprehensive Plan to Incorporate the City's Regional Airport Master Plan, Land Use Compatibility Plan from October 2010. Yield to the floor.
Can we get a motion, please? I'm sorry? Okay? And is it for two weeks? We need a date. I would suggest continuing it to the first meeting in May then, which will be May 3rd. Okay? Is that all right with the second? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second on the floor to continue this item to May 3rd. Any discussion on the continuation motion? Seeing no lights. Motion on the floor is to continue this to-
I have a light. Sorry.
I'm sorry? Okay. Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hadcock.
Sorry, sir.
That's right.
Why I'm asking for a continuance and a council please is that if we could set a public meeting out there, we did change rules on the future land use for situations that were helping, happening out in South Valley. So, we decided, and the council had decided to, on comprehensive plans for the city, is to make sure we contact all the landowners in their agreement, let alone that they know what their land's gonna be. So, that would be why I am continuing. And I think it's a good way to work with the city and the landowners out by the airport. I do believe the plan is a good plan. I just wanna make sure that we have people on board and that they know what's happening out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue this item to the May 3rd City Council meeting. Mr. Green?
I think the first council meeting in May is May 2nd.
That's because I'm looking at a 2010 calendar up here. Okay?
I also have one more question, sir.
Go ahead.
Do we have to make a separate motion for a public meeting? Or do we just take that to legal and finance? Or if someone could answer that? Thank you, sir.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to continue this to the May 2nd City Council meeting. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello. Motion on the floor is to continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I am in favor of continuation with the stip, or sending it back to the finance with the stipulation of public meetings because the information is, is very fascinating about how they came up with the decision. It was very methodical and a very proven method. So, I think once the landowners in the area understand what went into, to these decisions, they will be on board with it. So, and I, I support all efforts to share that with them.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to continue. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent items, items 35 through 41. 35 through 41 inclusive. Chair would ask if any of the items 38, or let's see, 35 through 41 need to be polled. I do have a note here to poll item 38 and 38A. Is that correct? Any additional? Please turn on your light. Seeing none, the chair will look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, items 35 through 41 inclusive, with the exception of items 38 and 38A. Have a motion, second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's see. Deb, can you read in item number 38, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just asking a question. 42 is second rea, I'm sorry.
38.
I apologize. 38 is a request by Dream Design International for Jim Skolfer, preliminary plat, located on the north side of East Mall Drive, approximately half mile west of intersection of Elkvale Road and East Mall Drive. And-
Vicki, Vicki, I'm gonna ask you two questions. First of all, would it be appropriate to take item 38A up prior to item 38? Jason, is that, would that be your recommendation? I'm gonna ask the council to go ahead and take up item number, since we don't have a motion on the floor yet, we're gonna go ahead and switch to item 38A. And Vicki, can you please read in which, what your recommendation for 38A is?
38A is to authorize the request for the mayor and finance officer to sign a revised covenant agreement replacing the previous covenant agreement with Rapid Center LLC dated June 2008.
Okay. Now, why don't you go ahead and explain the rationale behind adding this item onto the agenda and also the handout that you gave to the council?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in 2008, when the Cabela's lot and two additional lots were originally platted, Rapid Center LLC, the owner of that property and the property on tonight's agenda for GLM subdivision, entered into a covenant agreement with the city stating that by July of 2010, there would be a five-lane street section along East Mall Drive with signalization and additional turn lanes. Now, obviously, the development in the area hasn't taken off like was, was projected. So, when we had this preliminary plat come forward, the applicant, Jim Skol, with Skol Construction, identified that there didn't appear to be enough traffic out there to warrant all those improvements. So, they have worked towards revising that traffic impact study and bringing forward a revised covenant agreement that would identify what improvements are needed along that street and the timing for those improvements and what would trigger those improvements. So, with that, as they are bringing that item forward, you will see that we have positioned the stipulations of approval to allow them some flexibility with the preliminary plat that when that final plat came in, that they would finalize that with staff as far as that traffic impact study went. And that they would secure a covenant agreement that would require the signature of the mayor and the finance officer. Tonight, by putting the 38A on the agenda, it precludes the need for them to come back to you to get that authorization. And that would, again, would delay their process. Please note that they have submitted a preliminary revised traffic impact study that clearly shows that most of those improvements will not be needed long-term and that some of those improvements will not be needed for this phase of the development at all.
Okay? Thank you. So, do we have, okay? We have a motion and a second for approval. The motion on the floor is to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign the covenants agreement. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Ms. Fisher.
Go ahead, please.
Was this the agreement that also is dealing with the TIF in that area for some of these improvements and developments?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is separate from that TIF developers' agreement for the area, and it clearly was specific to a date. Remember when Rapid Center LLC first came forward with the Cabela's lot? It did so with the guarantee that all improvements would be done by a specific date. We cautioned them at that time that instead of giving traffic counts and land use as the reason behind those improvements, they instead went with a date specific. And obviously, the improvements just haven't come forward once the Cabela's lot was created.
Thank you. I guess my concern is, is that there may be other impacts with this covenant. And by, you know, bringing this up last minute, I know for myself, I haven't had time to really look at this item at all, nor was I really aware of it. I guess I would just ask my colleagues to also take that into consideration, that there may be other impacts that we're not aware of right now, and we should maybe take that into consideration before moving forward hastily. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach. Oops, Ron, did you speak?
No, thank you. I'll speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
So Vicki, this, in this TIF area, are these improvements that were included in the, in the whole, I mean, how does this affect that TIF district? Is it...
Vicki?
Mayor? Some of these improvements are, in fact, a part of that TIF where it comes down to the signalization. But even through that, with the traffic impact study that was approved in 2008, it directly secures Rapid Center LLC with the responsibility to improve some of East Mall Drive to five lanes, and to provide specific monetary commitment to some of those signalizations, both at the Cabela's intersection, and then some additional turn lanes towards the Diaz and East Mall Drive. So that would be something that they were on the hook for, independent from the TIF.
Right, so, but there was financing set aside in the TIF for that?
Correct.
I mean, obviously, the traffic study is dictating, is going to probably dictate the fact that you're not going to need that, is what we're, is that the point we're making here?
Well, and, Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
That is the reason why we bring forward the revision tonight. We did get a revised traffic impact study submitted that showed that most of these improvements would not be needed long-term. In fact, there is just a slight number count that identifies that at any point that there would need to be five lanes along East Mall Drive. Remember, here, not too long ago, the city council approved rezoning large portions of this property in the area from general commercial to light industrial, and with that, it greatly reduced the traffic count. And so that's what we encouraged them to go back and do. They were in violation of that previous covenant agreement. In our direction, they have revised that traffic impact study. It still has some tweaking to do, and at the end of the day, what we saw by Friday afternoon was that most of those improvements would not be needed as not only this property, but other properties east and west of the site develop, and certainly not with Phase 1, the plat you have before you tonight.
Yeah. Mr. Wyffenbach, still on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at some point, do you have to go back and readjust the numbers and all the accounting part of the TIF, or is that a whole sovereignty, you think?
Vicki?
Mayor, thank you. No, that is something that's been secured through the agreements and the actions by council. If they don't make those improvements, or those improvements aren't needed, that's just those improvements that do not have to get paid back as a part of the TIF, they would not be needed.
Okay, that's the question I have. So basically, we're saying they're not needed now, and what, due to the new traffic studies, is because of the rezoning into light industrial?
Vicki?
There may be some improvements that need to come forward as far as turn lanes go, but the probability of that ever being out, being built out to a five-lane section with the existing zoning and the projected land uses is something that this most recent traffic impact study shows probably will not happen.
Anything else?
Well, something slipped my mind here, but that's fine. I understand where we're going. It makes sense to do that, it sounds like, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman and Deb Hatcock.
Just a question, if I could ask Vicki, please?
Go ahead, please.
On 38A, those are basically the stipulations and the things that are for the improvements, right? And 38 is the preliminary plat. Does either of these come back to us as a city council, again?
Vicki?
No, they would not. These would be giving the staff the ability to continue to review the revised traffic impact study, and the attorney's office would then actually draft the covenant agreement based on the recommendations of that traffic impact study.
And how many times have we done this without the city council coming through, or, in this case, for the public hearing for the people that might have complaints on that after listening to this, that they thought it was going to be continued? If we decide to approve this tonight, does that, their basic outlet for getting these changes or moving these forward would be to go to the planning commission?
Vicki?
This item would not go back to the planning commission. Your action tonight would be final. I'm not familiar, please bear with me, not familiar if the council has taken previous actions similar to this. What I can assure you of is that the traffic impact study, as presented to us on Friday, did demonstrate that the majority of these improvements would not be needed. Similar to the previous covenant agreement that this property owner, Rapid Center LLC, entered into, this was a document that was crafted by the city attorney's office, and it followed the recommendation of the traffic impact study. If our traffic engineers did not believe that those were true numbers and assessments, then we would not request the city attorney's office to work with us on that document.
I appreciate that. 38A is not really the issue I'm having. I believe that through the traffic analysis and the things that were done, that's pretty much been proven. I'm just asking for public input on a preliminary plat that was continued, that won't have the public at this point thinking if they did have items, and it was on the continued, that they had time to bring it forward. That's my only concern. I don't believe that these, this project is a bad project. I think it is a really good one. But we have a process in place, if it's on the continued, that people have an understanding, again, that they won't get the input if they do have any questions. That's my only concern. So how would we do that, or can we not do that once we approve this? There's no other way for people to come back if they do have concerns to change any of this.
Vicki?
You are correct. If you do approve this item tonight, then you are putting this all administratively for the review and approval of staff. Remember that plats are not noticed, so the involvement of the public are those that are tracking this on the agenda. The only other property owner in the area that's currently been reviewing this, to my knowledge, and I'm reviewing their property as well, is Cambria Suites. And that is the Gateway Business Park subdivision, that's east of Cabela's, and you will be seeing them on your agenda in the next couple of meetings, where they, too, are working with this same property owner and bringing forward a revised traffic impact study, because they are impacted by these improvements, too. In fact, they've been working quite closely with the same traffic engineer to ensure that both of their needs are addressed in the same study, so that when we enter into a covenant agreement with this property owner, we use that same information to enter into a covenant agreement with Gateway Business Park, aka Cambria Suites.
Thank you. So you said plats aren't noticed, anyway?
No, they're not.
Okay, so that's, if they had questions, they would have came in between to the planning commission before this was even brought up today.
Vicki?
I do receive phone calls as items come on the agenda from some of the property owners, and to date, I think that the issues that they've discussed with me have been addressed through staff stipulations.
Thank you, and that's what I need to know. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Fisher, for bringing this forward, and this sounds like a good project. Unfortunately, I don't have an opinion, neither good nor bad, because I don't know, I don't know the details of this, and frankly, I haven't been offered the opportunity to review the covenant agreement that we're being requested a change to be made to. And at this point, I'm going to be voting no to this, because I will not vote for something that I haven't been able to do my due diligence and create an opinion, be informed on. Frankly, I just don't really feel comfortable making hasty decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman and Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to continue this item for two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to continue this item for two weeks.
Can I keep the floor?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Just as explanation, whenever I've had that issue, my colleagues have obliged, and I feel obligated to do the same. I think in two weeks, we'll all come back with a better understanding, especially taking the conversation that's been had at the Diaz about the decision that we're making. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to continue for two weeks. It's called Alderman and Deb Hatcock.
I believe that that's not a bad decision, but I would like to ask the applicant if this puts them in any way and jeopardize getting this job done, or anything like that. That would, would this continuance hurt your development or what they're trying to process here today?
Mr. Skol.
I'm Jim Skol. I'm the developer here, and it hampers it, because we've been on a very tight timeframe to get border states electric, because moving into this with a 31,500 square-foot building and doubling their size in Rapid City, which is nice for our city. And they, their lease is up November 1st, so it's going to be very, very tight to complete it. These things came up at the last minute, and we didn't realize it was going to be continued until this morning, I guess, which was disconcerting to me, because I thought we'd handled all the issues. So, yes, yeah, it will, because it delays everything. It delays the closing on the property for these people, and...
So, Mr. Skol, this delay was not put upon by you. It was put upon, and you were told that this was going to be continued, but you ended up having the items, thinking at this point it was going to be on the consent item today instead of the continued?
Until this morning, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go to Mr. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, most generally, I would yield to my colleagues, too, and have an interest in here, but I think that Vicki's put forward the information, and I need to make a decision based upon their ability and their technical expertise in this. I can, I can vote on this tonight, so I won't support the continuance tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue this item for two weeks. Seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Wa?
Motion on the floor is to continue.
Brown?
No.
Mason?
Aye.
Peterson? Wyffenbach? Davis? Headcock?
No.
Kroger? Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Okay, motion fails on a 7 to 2 vote. We're back to the original motion, which is for approval. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't realize there was a motion for approval, so I'll just yield to the floor. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval, and that is to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign a covenants agreement, revised covenants agreement. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no, Alderman, Costello. Oh, two noes, I'm sorry. Mr. Mason. Very good. Ian, let's see. We're on to item number 38 now. Alderman Quaker, if you'd please read that in.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 38 is a request by Dream Design International for Jim Skol for preliminary plat for proposed lots four through six located on the north side of East Mall Drive, approximately half a mile west of the intersection of Elkvale Road and East Mall Drive. For the previous items' approval, I'll move to approve this item as well.
We have a motion, second, for approval. Discussion on the motion. Vicki, do we need to actually approve this with the revised stipulations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
And that was all right with the second? Okay. Motion on the floor and seconded is to approve per the revised recommendations. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no. Thank you, everyone. That does take us through the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items, items 42 through 54. 42 through 54, everyone. And the chair will look for motion to open the public comment period, items 42 through 54. We have a motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I have a number of speaker request forms for items 45 and 46. The only other item I have, a speaker request form, is on item number 54A. So we're going to take that one up first. I'm going to, where's Barb Garcia? Barb, why don't you come forward and explain what item 54A is, and Mr. Castleberry can join if he'd like.
Barbara Garcia, Community Development. Cornerstone Rescue Mission sent me a request. They have some emergency needs because they are overcrowded right now. And I'm going to yield, if that's okay with you, Mayor, to Jim Castleberry and let him explain the situation.
Before you do that, I want you to explain as far as the funding sources.
Okay. He has a request for funds. We have two grants that we offered out in 2010 that have not been spent. One of them was the Boys Club. Boys Club has talked to me just in the last week about turning their funds back. They didn't have a full grasp of the amount of work it takes to verify the incomes of the people in the program, and they decided that it was going to cost them more to verify the incomes of their kids' families than it was worth for the amount of money they were granted. So they've returned their funds to us. The second one was CareNet. They were awarded funds for a fatherhood program for pregnant couples, and we have never had any contact from them since they were awarded their funds last April. We've sent them numerous emails and letters and phone calls, asking them why they aren't drawing their funds, and if there's something we can help them with. We've gotten no responses. So in January, I sent them a letter telling them that I would be pulling their funds to reallocate, because we need to get them moved. I haven't gotten no response from that letter either. So we have a little over $4,000 to spend that you can, if you choose to, reallocate to this project.
So, Barb, just to summarize, what you're asking for is for the city council to reallocate $1,891.19 from the Boys Club, and also $2,500 from CareNet, for a total of $4,391. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Mr. Castleberry? There again, if you...
Well, we'll use this one. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll truncate this and simply say that we appreciate your consideration on the issue. We did send you a short memorandum highlighting the salient point here that the mission's full. I don't have room for folks. We've had to put them in motels. By about May 15th, motel rates will double, if in fact there's room. So we're, we faced with a situation we've never been faced with before. We are absolutely out of room at the men's mission and at the women and children's shelter.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, just, you know, this is public comment period. From this point forward, we'll actually take the issue up once we get it on the agenda, so it'll become a shorty. Okay, now, we have a number of speaker request forms on items number 45 and 46. There again, just a reminder, everyone, we do time this, three minutes each, and what I'll do is I'll start calling these in, and if you come up, identify yourself for the record, watch the lights, you'll have your three minutes. Thank you. First one is Robert Tolman. Robert Tolman. There again, Mr. Tolman, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, the floor's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Robert Tolman. I'm a citizen of Rapid City. Two minutes will be my time, and if I'm on an order, I'd like to also thank you on item 25 concerning the Parkview Pool, or, excuse me, Parkview Tennis Courts, the $50,000 that the city is also putting forth toward that. Sorry. All I ask is thank you for your consideration to put the billboard initiative onto the ballot. I ask and urge you each to place the initiative on the June 7th ballot, the city election, in order to allow the greatest number of citizens of Rapid City to participate in you each to place the initiative on the June seventh ballot, the city election, in order to allow the greatest number of citizens of Rapid City to participate in the greatest form of democracy, the simple act of voting. Thank you for your time and consideration for this matter and your dedication to the city of Rapid City. With that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Brendan Casey on items forty-five and forty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. My name is Brendan Casey. I'm with Epic Outdoor Advertising. On March twenty-ninth, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware and has read and reviewed the email I sent wherein Epic's analysis indicates that there's several violations of state law amongst the two proposals, specifically South Dakota Codeified Law thirty-one twenty-nine sixty-nine, thirty-one twenty-nine sixty-six, thirty-one twenty-nine seventy-three, and thirty-one twenty-nine seventy-five. I'm assuming you've all got that and have reviewed it. Next is a letter from Daktronics. This was hooked to an email today wherein they identify the same violations of state law that I do. And with a shake of the head, has anybody seen this one prior to voting? Letter dated March thirtieth from the law firm of Claiborne, Los and Sabres, identifying much of the same. Have you all seen this? Yes? And lastly, but not least, one from Larkin Hoffman, which would be the corporate attorneys for Lamar Outdoor, illuminating both of these violations of state law and additionally constitutional First, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendment considerations. You've all reviewed that. This comes forth to you with no recommendation from legal and finance. I would suggest that you vote to deny this. I would also encourage Councilwoman Peterson not to vote. As many of you saw, her husband Jim Peterson was up here a few weeks ago proclaiming that he was a leader of scenic America. I don't think that would be appropriate for her to vote. Additionally, Mayor Hanks has, we have established, obviously, that he has had some interactions with Lamar, and I would ask him not to vote as well. Over the years, we've seen Jason Green indicate to the council that do not let the threat of litigation affect your vote. And I'm eager to hear what he says about the absolute certainty of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. We also have a speaker request form from Jim Peterson. Mr. Peterson's not here. We have a speaker request form from Pat Roseland. Mr. Roseland, please identify yourself for the record. The floor's yours, sir.
Pat Roseland, and Mayor, council members, thank you very much for listening. I am not a native of Rapid City, but I do consider Rapid City home. I moved back to Rapid City eighteen years ago, and part of that, I attended college, worked elsewhere for ten years. There are two reasons for my return. First, family. Second, Rapid City itself. I love, I had loved Rapid City when I lived there in the past, and I knew when I left, I would return. Over the last few years, Rapid City has been held captive by sign companies. Off-premise billboards were erected with no thought given to the aesthetic value of Rapid City and the visual clutter that the billboards created. There seemed to be no end to this atrocity. There were individuals over the years who voiced this pleasure with the billboard proliferation and what harm that the sign companies were doing to the city of Rapid City. But their voices were not heard. It seemed as if Rapid City had lost its self-esteem. It was like David and Goliath, with Goliath being the sign companies. However, those individuals and others have united, creating scenic Rapid City. We have a common goal to control the infestation of billboards in our beautiful city. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we have been successful in gaining over 4,000 signatures of like-minded citizens of Rapid City who felt like that together, we can take our city back from the sign companies that choose to destroy the beauty of Rapid City for profit. I urge you, the city council, to place these two initiatives on the June seventh ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roseland. We also have a speaker request form from Kathy Calhoun. There again, Kathy, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, then the floor's yours, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Kathy Calhoun, and I'm speaking as a citizen of Rapid City for over thirty-one years and a member of the Scenic Rapid City Group. We picked Rapid City over many different locations because after the flood, the city council was progressive and forward-thinking. They thought about the needs of the community as it grew into the future. They built a civic center, a new high school, a new hospital, and established parks with restrictions for growth. Now, I'm asking you to have the vision of the future for our children and our grandchildren. Tourism continues to be a dynamic force in the economy of this region. Because of this, I ask you to look at the environment that we are creating for tourists. We cannot do anything about the visual blight of billboards that are in Bean County and Buck Selder that approach, that affect the approaches to our city, but we can regulate the ones within our city limits. One thing we can do is to regulate off-premise electronic signs that are distracting and, in my opinion, create a safety hazard for those unfamiliar with our roads. While I was working to obtain the required signatures for this ordinance, I couldn't, I can't begin to tell you how many people came up and stated that they'd been so engaged in a certain electronic sign that they took their eyes off the road and felt that they were a safety hazard and that we currently have many of the electronic signs at our most hazardous intersections, the railroad intersections. A city council with your eye on the future, I hope you'll focus on the technologies of the future. With a smartphone like I have right here and a 3G network, one can pull up all of the tourist attractions in Rapid City and the hills. Not only that, but reservations may be made at the restaurants, tickets can be secured at the movie theaters or the civic center events. Our city, our children's generation look to their computers or smartphones and decide where to go, make reservations, and then place the address into their GPS unit, which directs them to the location, all without the need of off or really even on-premise signage. They merely need the address. The off-premise signs certainly, in my opinion, are dinosaurs. I recognize that we all do not have this technology yet. However, we have an extensive network of signs that will not be coming down to help them until they do. Because of the state regulations, which do not allow our own city councils such as you to make decisions about what we will allow in our cities, we are restricted to only certain things that we can regulate, like spacing and so forth. Short of banning billboards, we can do the following things to attract the tourists of the future and to decrease stress in our community. First, I would have all of the current electronic signs change the timing of the message for the current six seconds to as in some communities have done to every twelve to twenty-four hours. This would help to decrease the visual stimuli, also to not allow any future electronic signs. We need to encourage the use of the Department of Transportation signs, which are placed at the appropriate exits, letting tourists know of the current restaurants, gas stations, hotels, and so forth. They're cheaper for business advertising and more effective for tourist directions. We need to enforce our current sign code as well as to pass this proposed ordinance related to the spacing and decreasing the number of sign faces and keep the size of the face to 250 feet or smaller. We need code enforcement to regulate all signs to make sure they're in compliance with the current...
Kathy, there would be time, so if you could just summarize in the next ten or fifteen seconds.
Okay. Well, I think the other, the other big piece that I would like to say is that we need to encourage the moratorium on the current signs as well because we, and allow the people to speak at the June seventh election.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Fred Thurston, items forty-five and forty-six.
Brought my smartphone.
There again, Fred, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, then the floor's yours.
Yes, my name is Fred Thurston. I'm an architect in Rapid City. Thank you, council people. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. But what I would really like you to know is there's other people speaking to you. I was fortunate enough to participate in sitting at the table to collect signatures over the last couple of weeks at the home show and at the sports show. And if you could sit there and listen to the people who come up to you, nine, over ninety percent of the people who were registered voters in Rapid City were excited to be able to sign this petition, to be able to have their opinion heard. I don't know how a council could consider not putting this on the election because the people want to be heard. They're tired of the signs. Probably the biggest complaint we got from people is that we didn't go further in trying to get more control and more billboards taken down. This is an issue that the public has a personal interest in. They care about the beauty of their town. They care about tourism. And they realize that this isn't helping bring people to town. This is a blight on the energy to our community. They want to be heard. They want to vote. Please put this on the ballot for June seventh.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Linda Sandvik. Good evening, Linda. If you, there again, just please identify yourself for the record, then the floor's yours.
My name is Linda Sandvik, and I have been a resident of Rapid City for the past thirty-two years. I'm very interested in my community. And I come before you tonight to encourage you to listen to the voices of your constituents. I, too, collected signatures in a variety of places. One place I collected them was in the park. People walking in the park who appreciate, everybody signed it. Everyone, rarely do you get such an opportunity to hear so many people raise their voices on any given issue. Last week, Scenic Rapid City delivered over 3,000 signatures, supporting the two initiatives to greatly tighten the city's sign ordinance. These were collected in twenty days. This morning, they delivered many more, bringing the total to over 4,000, and we had to turn away at least that many more who wanted to sign but lived outside the city limits. There is a simple message we received from the citizens of Rapid City, loud and clear. Stop this runaway train of outdoor advertising that is destroying our scenic beauty, as well as the architectural and historic surroundings that make our city such a wonderful vacation destination and a place to live. These initiatives are sound. Scenic Rapid City has contacted local and nationally renowned legal assistance in their creation, as well as nearly universal enthusiastic encouragement from our citizens. Please add your support to this grassroots effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. We have a speaker request form from Terry Olson, items forty-five and forty-six.
Terry Olson, Goliath Outdoor. No, seriously, Lamar. According to growth management in 2002, there were 271 permitted off-premise billboards. Since 2002, seventy-five of these have been removed, a net reduction of twenty-eight percent. This means there's twenty percent fewer billboards today than there was in 2002. Lamar personally has spent over $500,000 cleaning up, rebuilding, and reducing our billboards, resulting in an additional reduction of 12,000 square feet under Rapid City Sign Code fifteen twenty-eight two forty B of the Rapid City Sign Code. What does all this mean? It means the presence of billboards in Rapid City has decreased by thirty-seven percent since 2002. Do you know how many new billboards and new locations have been built since 2002? Zero. The current ordinance is working. So, where is the proliferation of billboards we hear so much about? Lamar has installed four digital billboard locations in this city. In order to rebuild these digitals, we reduce the old sign size by fifty to sixty-three percent. If I could wave my magic billboard eliminator wand and reduce the number of billboards in Rapid City by fifty percent, wouldn't that be a good thing? But that's exactly what we've been doing. In February sixteenth of 2011, the Rapid City Journal had an article in the paper about visual clutter. Do you know how many off-premise billboards are in this picture? Three. The intentions of Scenic Rapid City Group are admirable, but I believe they're misguided. The fight is not with the off-premise, but with the on-premise. Even growth management say they have never received any complaints about Lamar Digitals, yet they get numerous complaints from small off-premise digital signs blinking, flashing. So, where do we go from here? Do we go through with what will prove to be a very costly referendum? Or do we step back, breathe, and ask ourselves, how can we resolve this? I've made several attempts to negotiate and arbitrate this matter. I've asked Mayor Hanks a number of times. No resolution. I've asked council members for help. Some helped, some didn't. I've been to the Mount Rushmore Group. No resolution. I've been to the Mount Rushmore Business and members. No resolution. Some would say I'm a glutton for punishment. Maybe. But I prefer to see myself as a person who is trying to bring everyone to the table. I've come to understand that in negotiations, I will not get anything, everything I want, and I'm okay with that. However, the all for nothing are my way of the highway. Add to my adopt, it will solve nothing and will do little to advance the welfare and protect the welfare pocketbooks of the citizens of Rapid City. We have bigger issues than this, yet we fall into the old eighty-twenty rule, where we're spending eighty percent of the time, being what twenty percent of the issues vape in Rapid City. I'm asking Mayor Hanks and city council to rise above the emotions and work with us to mutually resolve this matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Doug Brumka, items forty-five and forty-six. There again, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, the floor's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Doug Brumso with Lamar Advertising. First of all, I want to thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Lamar Advertising of South Dakota provides a valuable service to Rapid City community, a partner helping local businesses grow and prosper. Approximately eighty to ninety percent of our South Dakota business comes from local advertisers who find outdoor advertising to be the most cost-effective medium through which to get their message to potential customers. Local businesses enjoy the results they receive from outdoor advertising at a fraction of the cost of any other mediums and have been using outdoor in their marketing efforts for many years. A ban on billboards is bad business for everyone. Local businesses will suffer with less access to a cost-effective advertising, and outdoor advertising employees may suffer through cutbacks in employment. Tourism will also endure loss as nearly one-third of outdoor advertising business comes from restaurants, hotels, and other travel-related establishments. Let's not forget that tourism is the second-leading business in South Dakota. In today's economic environment, the local economy will pay the price of a billboard ban. Lamar of South Dakota has donated tens of thousands of dollars per year to public service and nonprofit organizations. In South Dakota, Amber Alerts are immediately broadcast in all digital billboards as soon as one is issued. We are very fortunate here in South Dakota that we have not had to utilize that feature of our boards. But if it ever happens, we're all set up to get an immediate response out to the public. Lamar has also teamed up with America's Most Wanted to help in the capture of several wanted criminals across the country. Just recently, a man known as the East Coast Rapist, who terrorized women along the East Coast for more than a decade, was captured thanks to a digital billboard in less than a week. We are hopeful we were able to help our local businesses continue to grow going forward. We're proud to be partners in Rapid City community and happy to work with the city council to reach an agreement to benefit all our neighbors and businesses. Thank you for your attention to this and hope you deny this request, and we continue to provide economical and technology-driven ways for our local business to grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Mike Kozni. There again, Mike, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor's yours, sir.
My name is Mike Kozni. I'm a citizen of Rapid City. Been here my whole life. I actually live, my grandmother lived right behind Waldrug. So, as everybody knows, Ted Hughes had had a lot of signs. So, it's kind of odd for me to be in this position. So, I'd like to basically say we come before you tonight as a citizen with concerns, but also as a representative of many. We come representing over three thousand, wait a second, that was four thousand votes now, people who asked to bring a vote to the people to initiatives. And this only took three weeks. How many are we really representing? These initiatives gives us all a guideline for future signage in our community. We would also ask you, as our elected representatives, to put an immediate moratorium on all permits for off-premise signs. The city of Rapid City controls until your constituents have the opportunity to speak. We would ask one or all of you to add this to the agenda tonight. Yes, we have been told there is no place for new signs, so why put a moratorium on signs if it is not needed? The reason for these initiatives, and not waiting one more day, is we have seen signs put up, then asked for forgiveness. Sign companies waiting until nobody is watching, then doing as they wish, not always in the best interest of this community's future. So, to summarize, we ask you to act not only on putting these initiatives on the ballot in June, but again, put a freeze on off-premise signs until your people have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Cindy Hamilton. Nope, no Cindy here. Okay. Let's go on. We also have a speaker request form from Larry Beasley. There again, Larry, if you'd just please identify yourself for the record, the floor's yours, sir.
Sure. My name's Larry Beasley. I'm a resident of Rapid City. Very briefly, I'd like to paraphrase a letter that I sent to the city council here just over the weekend. The citizens' billboard control initiatives are steps toward control of off-premise billboard signs, spacing, and lighting. Voters are interested in this because the sign code revision task force has been largely ineffective. It seems to have accomplished very little so far. I believe fewer billboards are favored by most citizens of the community here. Now, obviously, advertising is important to local businesses. Fortunately, many alternatives to CD billboards are available. Other forms of advertising, such as broadcast or print advertising, can be accepted or rejected. The listener can turn down the volume. The reader can turn the page. Some of the tacky and tasteless signs along our roadways are simply in our face. They offend the traveler. They're always in the way. They draw attention away from driving, and they deface our natural environment. The problem with off-premise billboards is that they're frequently obtrusive, and quite simply, they're generally ugly. I've been a citizen here for thirty years, and I've traveled, have the opportunity to travel in forty-nine of the fifty states. Now, there are many other communities in which I have traveled that have fewer or no billboards. They thrive, and they're frequently recognized as attractive. There are four states that actually allow no billboards. They're known for their scenic beauty. Think about Vermont, Alaska, Montana, and Hawaii. They prosper. They have great tourism industries. They're vacation wonderlands, and they're attractive. They do it without billboards. Clean, uncluttered vistas, and the beautiful scenery of the Rapid City area would be of long-term benefit to the area in terms of aesthetics and in terms of economics. I urge you to support generally billboard control. I think it creates a more pleasant environment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Lisa Modric, items forty-five and forty-six.
Lisa Modric, citizen of Rapid City, scenic Rapid City. And thank you, Mayor, and our City Council. I'm pleased to be here before you again, as I've been before you now for over a year and a half, watching, monitoring, and working towards the problems that we have with our current billboard situation and searching as well as you have for solutions. So I thank you for this opportunity to present the two initiatives to you. The first is the Citizens Billboard Control Initiative to keep size at two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, as stated in our current sign code, for spacing two-thousand feet between poles and lighting to limit digital for reasons of safety, citizens' concerns, placement, and city beautification. By initiative, this places these requirements as a firm guide for off-premise and allows the sign code to hold code. The second is the Citizens Sign Credit Reform, to term out the sign credit currency. Sign credits are only certificates and should have had a term at the time of its issue when this program was created. This is to correct this program and give ample time to terminate. Both initiatives are written to protect its city and its citizens for the future. Anything existing today is in grandfather protection. This means that the outdoor advertising companies still have the opportunities to continue business as usual, and their statements make in concrete our current initiatives because they already stated to you that they haven't had growth since 2002. Therefore, it's business as usual. I hope that these initiatives will be supported by all of you. This is an action of the people of Rapid City and shows the process of democracy. It displays how great the citizens of this city are and how much they love their city. And it is why our city continues to grow in strength and in economics, as well as in our tourism. Rapid City is a city of its people. In appreciation of your leadership and your support of the people of our great city, we ask you keep Rapid City scenic and allow the vote for our two initiatives before the people on June seventh, and we thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Norma Thompson. Good evening, Norma.
Good evening.
If you please identify yourself for the record, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Norma Thompson. I didn't intend to speak this evening, however. I agree with everything that has been said for those in support of having to vote on the billboards. And I also worked down at the home show Saturday for four hours. I had the same response that Fred Thurston had, and the main reason I wanted to speak was because in Saturday's Rapid City Journal forum item regarding billboards, it was stated that petitions were turned in by a group called Scenic Rapid City, and it stated that they dislike signage of any type. This is totally untrue. Our Rapid City businesses need signs, and we have many, many, very attractive signs which complement those who have them. They contribute to an attractive and inviting Rapid City for those who live here and those who visit here. And I know that Maine, Vermont, Alaska, and Hawaii have no billboards, and they were concerned when they passed an ordinance to not have any that it was going to affect their tourism. But to their surprise, they found that their tourism business continued and improved, and people appreciate going there to visit a community that doesn't have the blight of the billboards. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. We also have a speaker request form from Deborah Jensen, items forty-five and forty-six. There again, Deb, just identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks and members of the Rapid City Council. My name is Deborah Jensen. My husband, Jack, and I are business owners and property owners in Rapid City. I'm also president of the Mount Rushmore Row Group and a member of the Scenic Rapid City Committee. That is the grassroots group that is spearheading these initiatives. Both groups include businesses, legal, medical, and engineering professionals, also residents, retirees, and others who are interested in the continued vitality, economic growth, tourism, safety, and aesthetics of our community. As business owners, we do understand the importance of signage. The purpose, of course, of an on-premise sign is to inform the public that you will find a particular business, such as a hair salon, a real estate agency, other professional building, or store. These signs attached to these businesses also tell Rapid Cityans that we are proud to be a part of the community, and we participate in the community in terms of the city services, the property taxes, the permits, the fees, and of course, the sales taxes that we provide. On-premise signs range in size, of course, but generally, thirty-two square feet is pretty common. Off-premise signs are generally two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, but many of them in Rapid City are much larger, three-hundred-and-seventy square feet. Their purpose is to send visitors and residents somewhere else, to Deadwood, to eat crab legs, as the huge billboard on Omaha attempts to do as it obscures the surrounding businesses. Or the billboard may want you to vote for or against a candidate, an amendment, and of course, an issue. Remember, billboards pay no property taxes or sales taxes. There is also currently an oversupply of billboards in Rapid City. In fact, just two years ago, Doug Brumso from Lamar told an Associated Press reporter, quote, "Certainly, I would say we're at capacity. We do not need any more," end quote, May ninth, 2009. It is evident now that we have a glut of billboards. On Highway seventy-nine from the landfill to Family Thrift, there are eight billboards currently with no messages at all, just big, blank faces. These initiatives allow all the billboards in Rapid City that are currently up to remain, probably for decades. Thousands of forward-looking people signed these petitions, believing, as Doug Brumso did two years ago, that the city is at capacity. We do not need any more billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speaker request forms. Anyone else wish to speak to any of these items? And there again, we're dealing with items forty-two through fifty-four inclusive. Now, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period at items forty-two through fifty-four inclusive, please.
One motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to ordinances. Item number forty-two, Alderwoman Hadcock, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Forty-two is a second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven sixteen, allowing fence heights exceptions in second front yards by amending certain sections of Chapter fifteen point four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? We're dealing with item number forty-two, which is second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven sixteen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item forty-three, please.
Forty-three is a first reading of ordinance number fifty-seven eighteen, an ordinance amending section seventy point oh six of the Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, zoning the within-described property as requested by Jim Bickett for rezoning from low-density residential district to medium-density residential district located at twenty-eight twenty-five, twenty-nine oh nine, and twenty-nine seventeen Garden Lane, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'd just like to thank Gary Brown, the future land use, for going through with me and some of the landowners, getting this to be medium-density residential. We had many meetings with them, and out in South Valley, the residents, actually, some of them came in and were for this. So we appreciate the meetings that were held. The public hearings were many. We continue some of this, and they are in favor of this as well. So I'd like to thank all the people that were involved in this for helping this man in this area to get this done. Thank you.
Very good.
For to help get this done, hopefully.
Motion on the floor is for approval, first reading of ordinance number fifty-seven eighteen, item number forty-three. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd too like to extend a thank you to the people that were involved in this. This is a big difference. This area was annexed in over a period of time, and they've looked at a lot of heartache over there. And Alderman Hadcock has taken a lot of time to bring some of these issues forward that were not just forcing land changes upon people without them having true acknowledgement of it, which is, some of the bad things that's happened over there have led to some really good changes in our ordinances, and so I just wanted to send a thank you to the people that spent the time to do that.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, item number forty-three. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item forty-four, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Forty-four is requested by fifth land surveying and consulting engineers for Joseph Hecker for a preliminary plat located at sixty-thirty Yuna Dell Acres, and I move approval with stiffs.
We have a motion and second for approval with stipulations dealing with item number forty-four, which is a preliminary plat. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number forty-five, please.
Forty-five, the Citizens Billboard Initiative Municipal Initiative Petition in the municipality of the Rapid City, South Dakota, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to go to Jason Green. Is that the appropriate motion, or is it?
I think the appropriate motion would be to accept the petition and place the item on the ballot for the June seven municipal election.
Was that the motion?
Yes, sir.
And/or of the second. Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to accept and to place on the ballot. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, can you explain the council's role in this, placing this on the ballot?
Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, the council's been presented with petitions, and I believe the finance officer will confirm that there are a sufficient number of signatures on those petitions. I provided you with a copy of the relevant statute. It's SDCL nine dash twenty dash four. At this point, the statute mandates that you put this item on the ballot. I think the only way that it would be permissible for you to decline to put this on the ballot is if it was clearly unconstitutional on its face. If it said something like, "It's unlawful to criticize the government in Rapid City." I think something like that you would be justified in. This is not clearly unlawful on its face. My advice is accept these two petitions and place them on the ballot. The discussion on the merits can happen in the public forum.
And I appreciate that. So, I mean, there's been a lot of talk tonight about democracy and how the process works and government by the people, for the people. And let me tell you, all of us up here on the dais take this job with high accountability to the people in the community. Obviously, there's been some talk about the billboards and what has taken place. I've spent several hours talking to some of the scenic Rapid City people. I've spent several hours talking to a lot of the people that have and own the billboards and operate the billboards. I got to say, I understand this process is a part of the process that takes place, but also understand that when we make votes up here, we are speaking for the people, too. That's what we do. We're elected by the people, for the people. We are part of the democratic process also. I just want to make sure that there's no mistakes made there and understanding our position about when a petition is brought forward to us, it's, we're not looking at the merits of the petition. Okay? So when we put this on the ballot, we are saying that these people want to bring this petition forward, we're going to put it on the ballot, and we're not really going to hear to discuss the merits of the petition. I am a little bit disappointed in the fact that there is some common ground here after talking to some of the scenic Rapid City people, talking to some of the billboard people. There's a lot of common ground here, but we've circumvented some of the system to get to this point. I am a little disappointed in that, and I would request that the citizens of our community look in their own backyards also, and we come together as a community, as so suggested here tonight. And I think that we could find common ground, and we could find opportunity just looking in our own backyards. If we look at some of these things that are on the petition, they're agreeable. Some of them are in our code. Some of them, my understanding is they want to be made as ordinances. I can live with that, and I understand that, and I understand exactly why. And because it's because these councils changed their minds at will. It's called a thing called deem pertinent, and we use it throughout our code inside of our city, which puts the citizens and us in the same boat. It puts us in a bad boat because every time the council changes, somebody's position can change because we deem something pertinent or we don't deem it pertinent. It causes a lot of confusion inside of our city and a lot of opportunity for ill will between people when there is some common ground to be had here. I will support this going on on the ballot. There is some, there is things that I do disagree with here, and tonight, I'm not really going to talk about the merits of it because I don't think that's appropriate. I think that we're here to, whether to put this on the ballot or not. But I do say on the merits of the fact that I do believe there's common ground here that was unexplored, and I'm a little bit disappointed in the opportunity that we've passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to go on the record to say in that my husband doesn't tell me what to do anymore than Lisa Modric tells her husband what the weather will be. And it's a bit of an insult to all of us on the dais to insinuate that we're here to serve our spouse, and when all of us work very hard and diligently, oftentimes voting against what we ourselves would want in the order to represent our constituents. I love, I agree with Alderman Wyfenbach that I would have liked this to have played out a little differently. However, when the people stand up, the government needs to listen, and so I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that there has been a lot of discussion about this with all of us council members, and I appreciate Alderman Wyfenbach stating that we are listening loud and clear to what the people are saying, but we have considered a lot of the implications of this. And with that, I guess I did want to ask our city attorney a question concerning that.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Green, with the notice that there may be impending litigation with this, with putting this on the ballot, will the citizens and the voters be informed of any of those possible impacts?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the duties of the city attorney is to write the ballot explanation for an initiative, and I will definitely mention the possibility of litigation in those explanations.
Thank you, Mr. Green. The reason I ask that is I look forward to the vote coming up, and I look forward to this ballot initiative, but I do think it's important to understand all the impacts and various effects that this can have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green, did you have your lights on? Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to remind the council that we've had a very similar debate like this at least once before. And I have the minutes up for March seventeen of two thousand and three, March seventeen of two thousand and three. On page three, there was an energetic debate that night as to whether to accept the petitions to repeal the twenty-twelve fund. The city attorney at that time, Adam Altman, stated, it says here, "In his opinion, the city may not, as a matter of constitutional and state law, accept this petition and put the issue on the ballot. It would adversely affect the bondholders and void the contract that was created with the bondholders that previous city councils agreed to for the bond issue." The city council, including myself, unanimously voted to accept that petition and allow the thousands of people that signed the petitions to make the decision. And so we had this type of discussion before, we're having it again. I think it is not our responsibility tonight to debate the merits of the petition itself. Our responsibility is whether or not sufficient signatures have been gathered to put the issue on the ballot so that the people of Rapid City can decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just one question. I'm in favor of putting this on the ballot, but I would just like to know how that affects the Civic Center sign for the Civic Center at this point.
Go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the initiative is approved, it would affect Civic Center sign in the same way it affects every other electronic sign. Those signs would continue to exist, they would be legal, non-conforming in status.
Thank you. I just wondered if we were treated any differently, and I think government needs to be treated the same when it comes to these initiatives, and I would hope we would do the same, or at least try to, if this passes, try to conform to what the people want. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green, your lights on, anything else? Motion on the floor is to accept the petitions and to accept the petitions and to set the election date for June seventh, correct? Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number forty-six, please.
Slow down, Mayor. Just kidding.
I thought it was going slow already.
You're gonna make me read this tongue twister again. The Citizens Reform Initiative for Billboard Sign Credits Municipal Initiative Petition in the Municipality of Rapid City, South Dakota, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. There again, the motion should be to accept the petitions and to set the election date for June seventh, correct? Is that all right with the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay, and the seconder, correct?
I thought that's what she said.
I thought it was what she said, too. I'm pretty sure it was. Okay, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd ask for clarification from Mr. Green.
Sure, go ahead, please.
I assume it's the same question you'd asked before about the role of the council? Is that clarification? It's the same on this item as it was on the previous. I believe you're obligated to place the item on the ballot.
Thank you. And again, I will not debate the merits of that. Obviously, that's not our role tonight, and I think that's been made clear to us, and I have the same concerns that I do from the other ones, so, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to accept the petitions and set the election date for June seventh. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We're onto the Public Works Committee items, item number forty-seven. Alderman Quaker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-seven, Rushmore Crossing. This is a request by Renner and Associates for Jack DeGagny for a vacation of a portion of a non-access easement located at fifteen sixteen Egan Street. Move to approve with stipulations.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bids, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first bid is for the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant Project. We did receive six bids on this. The recommendation is to actually continue this to the April twelfth, two thousand and eleven Public Works Committee meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to continue this next legal and financing. Any discussion on that motion? Public Works, I'm sorry. Next Public Works meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to know why we're continuing it.
Pauline.
I believe there is a question regarding the subcontractors. Mr. Ellis could address it more definitely.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes, this is a big project, of course, had very detailed specifications. I just want to make sure that the apparent low bidder meets every specification that was stipulated in the contract. I think that they do, but I want to get this right, so I just need a little bit more time to review that. If we continue it to the next Public Works Committee meeting, we can still meet that thirty-day window we have to make an award.
Mr. Wyffenbach.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, and that's why I asked the question, because I see that it looks like Graham Construction Services is the low bidder, is that, I mean, have we done business with them before, Robert?
Mr. Ellis.
We have not. They're an Eagan, Minnesota corporation. They do a lot of water treatment plants, but there are just some things that I want to check with their company to make sure that they meet our pre-qualification requirements, qualification requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, Robert. I have full confidence in you, but I just, I mean, that bid's so close, and then I know that the next, next nearest bidder is a local contractor here, if I'm not mistaken, that you've done several projects with. And as, as always, I've had some concern when we get a new bidder. Now, we got a twenty million dollar project that's off by, the difference is like less than four hundred thousand, so, and I, I appreciate you looking at this again, Robert, and I have a lot of trust and faith in your expertise, but, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue this, or actually send this back to the Public Works Committee meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Next item to award the bid is the Florham Street Water Main Reconstruction from Fifth Street to Seventh Street Project. We received four bids on this. The engineer's estimate was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Recommendation is to award the bid to Rapid Construction Company, LLC, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
We have a motion and second to award the bid to Rapid Construction Company, LLC, for a grand total of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'd just like to thank the Public Works Department for the commitment and more to, to do some of these projects, and to note that the next five years, because of Public Works and CIP committees, we have sixty-one million dollars worth of projects in the next five years that will be done in infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval, Rapid Construction. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty, please.
Item fifty is the pavement rehabilitation project number four for the Meadow Brook Drive, Parkridge Drive, and Morningview Drive project. We received three bids on this. Engineer's estimate was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The recommendation is to award the bid to J&amp;J Asphalt Company in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents.
We have a motion and a second to award to J&amp;J Asphalt for four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
If we could, sir, from the Public Works Department, what is the pavement rehabilitation project? What is that program?
That's a point one-sixth that the council, that Mr. Ellis and I brought forward, and the council supported, and so this is, I believe, the third project that's being awarded, using, fourth project under that, a new program.
The point one-sixth is using how much money, sir?
It is using one and a half million dollars per year for the next ten years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-one, please.
Item fifty-one is the East Saint Francis Alley Storm sewer project. We received three bids on this, with the engineer's estimate being forty-five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Recommendation is to award the bid to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc., in the amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval to award to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc., for a grand total of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Fifty-two, please.
Fifty-two is the North Pinedale Reservoir for the Good Samaritan Society Project. This was continued from the last meeting to Public Works Committee. We did receive four bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid to Mainline Contracting, Inc., for the total amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and seven dollars.
We have a motion and a second to award to Mainline Contracting for a grand total of one million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven, one hundred and seven dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Fifty-three, please.
Fifty-three is the tandem roll-off truck from the Solid Waste Division. This also was continued from the last council meeting. The recommendation is to award the total bid to Eddie's Truck Sales, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. I do want to point out that this was not the low bid, but the low bid did not meet specifications, so it's the second low bid with the same vendor.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to award to Eddie Trucks for a grand total of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, which is the lowest bid that meets specs.
Correct.
Very good. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-four, please.
Item fifty-four is actually a correction to the bid award for the Heights Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension Project. After the, the bid was awarded, the Public Works Office went back and recalculated their, their numbers, and so the recommendation is to correct the bid amount from nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy, seven dollars and thirty cents, to eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents, which saves us approximately just shy of thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to approve the revised bid amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the revised bid amount to, let's see, the grand total of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to Mayor's Items. We do have a fifty-four A, and that is the item that was discussed by Barb Garcia and Mr. Castleberry, and that is, we will look for a motion to reallocate funds from the Boys' Club and from Kiranet for a grand total of four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'd just like to thank Barb Garcia and Jim Castleberry. They're two of the hardest working people in Rapid City that get things done for people in need, so we appreciate them very much, and we appreciate how the funding came about for this. So, again, these two people have been very good for our city.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Barb and Jim, thank you. Appreciate all your hard work on this. Item number fifty-five, which is, I'm sorry, we have a fifty-four B, which is Alderwoman Deb Hadcock, and an update on the boxing club's donation or fundraising.
I'd just like to thank the people, Malcolm Chapman, and some of the people from the Civic Center and the mayor for helping us get some of the chairs and the computers and some of the things, and I apologize, council. I got a lot of the donations pretty much set up once I put the word out, and with Malcolm Chapman, you already know, and the mayor, pretty easy to get that done. So, we appreciate your help, and they appreciated you very much, and they just wanted me to thank you.
Very good. Do we have a motion to acknowledge, please?
Slow move.
We have a motion and second to acknowledge. All those, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Fifty-four C, which is dealing with the Bike Path Master Plan, and we'll go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great pleasure and excitement that I say the draft report of the Rapid City Area Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan is available on the city website. I would like to make a, a request that it be placed on the front page of the city. Right now, you have to delve into, into...
Charlie, send a note up to my office, and we'll make sure that happens in the morning.
Thank you so much, because I know it is important to, to many people in the community. This has been a long-awaited plan. This is the draft report, and there is an open house on April sixteenth from four-thirty to six PM in the community room. So this is a time for all citizens interested to show up, analyze the plan, and give their input, because this is a process that is heavily reliant on the input of those who walk the streets and, and ride the paths. So, a lot of thanks to the Growth Management Department. Did I say walk the streets?
[laughing]
Of course, this is of interest to them. They want sidewalks, don't we all? Thank you. Many thanks to Growth Management and, and Public Works, and everyone who put time in on this. It's, it's gonna be a huge benefit to our city as, as transportation changes dramatically over the next twenty years, so, thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to acknowledge, please? We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under staff items fifty-five, update of twenty-twelve.
Just two quick updates. There was, out of the Phase Three twenty-twelve projects, a transfer of a little over a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to the Economic Development Partnership, and then in the Phase Four projects, there was a cost of about forty-two hundred dollars for Main Street Square, and that was to do some upgrades to the Nology Network that they'll be using over there, and also some geotechnical testing.
Yep. Can we have a motion to acknowledge, please?
Slow move.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the twenty-twelve update. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're onto the public hearing items, items fifty-six through sixty-eight inclusive. Chair would ask to open the public comment periods on fifty-six through sixty-eight inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's see, I have one speaker request form, item number sixty-three. Nope, we're not on sixty-three, I'm sorry. The public hearing items here is fifty-six through fifty-nine, and I do not have any speaker requests on those. Fifty-six through fifty-nine. So, the chair would ask, do any of the items fifty-six through fifty-nine need to be polled from the consent calendar? Fifty-six through fifty-nine, continued public hearing consent items. That's what we're dealing with right now. Nope, we're good? Okay. Chair? Yes.
The first item, first set of items you take up will be fifty-six through fifty-nine, but the public hearing at this time is on items fifty-six through sixty-eight.
Ah, very good. Very good. Thank you, because I am looking at, never mind. Very good. Let's take up John Seward, item number sixty-three.
John?
Why don't you go and identify yourself for the record?
I'm John Seward. I'm the executive director of the Main Street Square. I thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you today. We'll be holding our first roller derby competition in the downtown. These are some of the gals here on our team. I'd also like to introduce our new events director, Megan Karbowski. My actual first day was last Friday, so, welcome. We look forward to having a good event. They've had pretty good attendance so far, but we are looking forward to grabbing some of these groups that kind of need that kind of helping hand to bring them up to that next step, and I think we'll, we'll have a really good event on July, or June eighteenth, July sixteenth, and August twenty-seventh, and their first bout is against Lead, South Dakota, which I would say is probably a rival, would you say? Yes, and the second one is an invitational tournament in July, and then in August twenty-seventh, we have Bar, Bar Harbor? Bar Harbor, Michigan, coming down for a battle. So, we, they're traveling quite a distance, and we hope that we can give them a permanent site on Sixth Street next year when the Main Street Square is completed, and give them a permanent space that we can invite other teams from other states, including Nebraska, Minnesota, and there's tons of them around. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Megan, welcome. Thank you, everyone. We do leave the public hearing open during this part of the council meeting, so we're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items fifty-six through fifty-nine. We, I think we asked Patty, now, Patty, seeing none of those need to be polled, correct? Okay, chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items fifty-six through fifty-nine, per the recommendations on the printed agenda.
Slow move.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the continued public hearing items. We're, chair would look for a motion to close the public hearings on items fifty-six through sixty-eight inclusive, please.
Slow move.
Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're onto the consent public hearing items. These are items sixty through sixty-four, sixty through sixty-four. Do we need to have any of those polled? So, please try, and let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. Sixty-three, please, thank you. Any others that we need to have polled? Okay? Seeing none, chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, item sixty through sixty-four, with the exception of item number sixty-three, per the recommendations. Are we tired tonight? It's only nine o'clock.
It's the nine o'clock wall.
Yeah, nine o'clock. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent public hearing items, item sixty-four through, I'm sorry, item sixty through sixty-four inclusive, with the exception of item number sixty-three. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number sixty-three. Deb, could you please read that in?
Sixty-three is Destination Rapid City, DVA Destination, for a special event malt liquor license for an outdoor event held on June eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, located between Fifth and Sixth Street on Kansas City, six PM to ten PM, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I wanted to take this opportunity to, as they were talking about the roller derby thing, and that's gonna be a good deal. Alderman Hadcock was whispering in my ear that she wanted to sign up for your team, but I noticed the ladies...
Come on down.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any, any discussion relevant to the topic on the floor?
[laughing]
Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
No, thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion.
Just one thing. I had the opportunity to meet John and Megan from Destination the last couple of weeks, and I think, or I know they're doing a great job down there, and there's some new opportunities with folks, with new faces, and I hear they're doing a great job from everybody else that's working with them downtown. So, good job, and we're, we're glad to have you on our team.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items. Item sixty-five, please.
You take up on the sixty-four?
Yeah, item sixty-four was part of the consent calendar.
Oh, right, because we pulled...
Yep, we pulled sixty-three. Okay, we're on to the non-consent calendar. Deb, could you please read in item number sixty-five?
Sixty-five, Mayor, is Resolution Number twenty-eleven dash zero-three-one of intent to enter into a lease of land with Rapid City Arts Council, corporate representative to SDLC nine dash twelve dash five point two, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Green, are you gonna give us an explanation of exactly what we're doing here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This applies to both items sixty-five and sixty-six. These are both items the council acted on at your last meeting. The resolutions of intent were approved. What you held tonight was the noticed public hearing. Neither of these items has a lease for consideration tonight. I think the appropriate action on both these items, therefore, is simply to acknowledge the public hearings on them. When the leases are actually prepared and they're ready for action, at that... prepared and they're ready for action, at that time they'll be brought forward through the usual process.
Yep.
My motion, number sixty-five, sixty-six, to acknowledge the... What Jason said?
Yep.
Public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a... Well, we're going to do this. We have a substitute motion and a second, and what we're going to do is we're going to take up items sixty-five and sixty-six to acknowledge the public hearings. Okay, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks, and thank you, Jason Green, for bearing with me as we went through this process to make sure that everyone was clear on how we proceed forward. And just to clarify also that this will allow the city and also both the Dolphin Arts Center and also Habitat for Humanity to engage in discussing these two leases as this goes forward.
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this will allow ample time. There's no mandatory time that those have to be back. When the discussions are completed, they'll come through the normal process.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the public hearings on items both sixty-five and sixty-six. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Item number sixty-seven, please.
Sixty-seven is second reading warrants number fifty-seven seventeen in order to amending section seventeen point oh-six of the chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Res zoning the within described property as requested by Sperlich Consulting Incorporated for OTS Incorporated for rezoning from general agriculture district to low-density residential Located three pages down, located west of the intersection of Overview Lane and Nugget Gulch Road, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is item number sixty-seven. Second reading warrants number fifty-seven seventeen. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Item number sixty-eight, please.
Sixty-eight is requested by Hills Alive Festival for a special exception to the flood area construction regulations located north of Omaha Street between North Mount Rushmore Road and Fifth Street and Memorial Park, and I move approval with stip.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Item sixty-eight A and sixty-eight B, I'm going to go to Mr. Green. I think you walked both those on. Were those both raffle requests?
They are both raffle requests. One is from the Western Dakota Technical Institute Paramedic Club. The other is from the South Dakota School of Mines and Foundation. I think Mr. Mason may want to abstain on the school of mines items, so I suggest taking them up separately.
Okay. We have a motion, item number sixty-eight A, please.
Move roll.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Was that the one you need to abstain on? Or is it the next one? Okay. Sixty-eight B, please. Do we have a motion?
Move roll.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Jordan Mason, you're going to abstain, correct? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes with Alderman Mason abstaining. Bill list, sixty... Pauline, where are we at? Nope, you don't have a mic. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The bill list before you is for five million three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as published for five million three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Green, executive session?
Yes, for the purposes permitted by SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
We have a motion.
Slow move.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by SDCL dash one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you. We're in executive session.